Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board appeals, March 11th. Just a few housekeeping matters. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off or put it on vibrate so it won't disrupt the meeting. Also, if you're here on behalf of petition, whether you're speaking for or in favor, please sign in at the podium. Under continued business, ZB-2019-1, a variance, the applicant is Spiros Skinzakis, property located at 55 Robert Street. The applicant proposes subdividing a lot and requires variance for minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit and frontage for proposed Lot 2, and any additional relief to exceed the max floor area ratio for Lot 1 and 2 under Section 5.1, table of dimensional requirements, and any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. The subject's property is in the traditional neighborhood, single-family zone district. Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodore, representing the applicant, Spiros Skinzakis. And while Spiros Skinzakis is the applicant, the property is owned by Kevin Scott. He's the current owner of the property. This is forming a partnership with respect to this development of these lots. And Mr. Skinzakis is here tonight, as well as Kevin Scott. Mr. Skinzakis is one of the owners of Dutton Real Estate here in the city of Lowell, and they're responsible for a number of developments and improvements in the city, and we're hoping that it will continue to do so if he gets a chance to develop these lots. As you know, that this is a request for subdivision, and the property is in the TSF zone, in which we are proposing to develop or subdivide two lots. One lot will be 7,500 square feet with the required frontage of 83 feet, and the minimum required here in this zoning district is 7,000 square feet and the frontage of 70 feet. Lot number 1, as we have, which is depicted on the plan, conforms with the zoning with respect to the dimensional requirements and the frontage requirement, but for the floor area ratio, which is .40. We have to request there, the minimum floor area ratio in this zoning district is .35. The second lot, as we have proposed, is a 6,000-square-foot lot that has frontage of 66.67 feet. So we're requesting a variance with respect to the square footage of 1,000 feet and approximately just less than 14 feet for the frontage. With respect to this lot, the request for the floor area ratio is what we have depicted here is .49, so it's .14 of variance with respect to that lot. I have provided members of the board a handout which lists all of the properties across the street, on Robert Street and on the same side as Robert Street, as well as it includes all the properties behind Robert Street, which is Mount Hope Street. I have highlighted in this handout, which is 13 properties, and only two of these properties are of what would be the required zoning for the lot size and the required zoning for the frontage. The remaining properties are all undersized lots, and they are also all non-conforming with respect to the frontage. As you can see, the property directly across the street, for example, is 5170 square feet, and it has frontage of 57.65 feet. So as a result of this evidence that you have before you, it's just an illustration that the proposed subdivision and the size of the proposed lots conform to this area here with respect to lot size and frontage, and also with respect to the floor area ratio, you can see that the average floor area ratio for these 13 properties is .52, that there are only two lots in this block that conform with what would be the required floor area ratio. So again, that we ask that the floor area ratio is in conformity, the relief that we're looking for is in conformity with what exists at this location. Currently, these lots are owned by Mr. Kevin Scott, who is here tonight. His family has owned these lots here since the 1920s. They are vacant lots, and vacant lots really serve no purpose. They serve no purpose to the city. They serve no purpose for the property owner. They are a blight upon the city and produce no resources for the city whatsoever with respect to development and taxes. And for this reason that we're submitting to you, that the development of these lots is a worthy purpose for the city and worthy for these developers here. And to work in conjunction with one another, it's something that would enhance the neighborhood character. It would produce, as we all know, the property taxes, and at the same time would provide additional housing, which is one of the mandates of the city plan that we've had for a number of years. We came across when we did this, we had some comments with respect to the Department of Planning and Development. And one of the items that they talked about significantly with respect to this property here was stormwater runoff. And they became, made us completely aware of it and how to handle the stormwater runoff, and we went there and conducted the soil tests to determine if it was, we could mediate the runoff on-site, and we went ahead and conducted the stormwater, the tests of the soil, and we conducted additional engineering, which will be discussed here tonight by the project engineer, Mr. Matt Hammer of Lamplex. The stormwater runoff, again, was brought to our attention by the Engineering Department and the Planning and Development Department, but also I received an email from Attorney Joe Clermont, who owns a house at 230 Mount Hope Street. So we went ahead and we conducted our soil tests and informed Attorney Clermont that we would meet with him and go over any of the items that he had a concern with. And we did that. We brought the calculations to Attorney Clermont. We brought the plans over to Attorney Clermont, and we went over those, and there, we showed the drainage trenches that we have there to show that we want to mitigate this and have the stormwater on-site. If we are here, if we are tonight, voted to be successful, there is a requirement or a condition that Mr. Clermont asked to be added, which Mr. Alvarez has, and I will give this to the board. I don't want to be too forward-thinking with this in the public hearing, and I'll provide that with you as a condition that if the applicant and any successes would take all steps to ensure that no runoff to neighbor, there is no runoff to neighboring properties in case the draining system winds up being insufficient. I told Mr. Clermont that I would offer this to the board. He asked me to, and I did. Now, we will submit with respect to working with planning and development, a plan to screen the lot for the neighbors, to provide landscaping there, and to go forward so that we have some barriers there for privacy issues. It is my understanding that Mr. Scott reached out and went to the neighbors to ask them. Not everybody responded, but the ones that did respond, like Attorney Clermont, we did go meet with them. We have plans, have submitted the architect's plans that you have there with an attached garage, three-bedroom homes with front porches on them, which we believe will fit in with the neighborhood. Now, and with all this that is presented here with you tonight, we believe that, as you can see, the topography of the soil there is, it's on a hill, so we believe that this development has a substantial hardship if we're not able to go ahead and move forward with it, and that we certainly, that this would be a benefit for the public good and in that, not a detriment, and that any approval that you make here would not derogate the intent of the zoning bylaws, but it would be an improvement. With that being said, Mr. Hammer can go over the site plan and also point out to you where we have the drainage and mitigation trenches on-site.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell. So the existing terrain of the property heads in this direction here. The water is focused to this low point here right now. It's a variation of shrubs, some brush-cut areas, but mostly overgrown shrubs and trees that surround the perimeter of the property. We did go out and conduct some soil tests. Those soil tests are here, and we were surprised to find great sandy gravel soils, which we normally don't find on properties in Lowell, so that was a pleasant surprise. So we know that the water is clearly moving through the site. And what we did was, based on those soil tests, we added some additional subsurface chambers in order to facilitate the roof runoff for the buildings, as well as the driveway as well. So here is the driveway here. Here's the proposed structure. The water's meant to sheet flow in this direction to an infiltration trench with an overflow pipe that goes to a set of six chambers in the rear. There's also two chambers, a set of chambers here for this portion of the roof, and there's a garage here and a place for one car here, so it can take two cars and possibly three if needed. Same configuration here, subsurface infiltration system in the rear to handle the roof, as well as an overflow for this infiltration trench here. The grading is such that each building will have a walkout in the back of the building, so it does work with the grades. So it'll be a straight-driving garage with a walkout in the rear. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Theodore, and Mr. Hammer, for the presentation. If you have no further comments, we're going to open it to the public. Those wishing to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward. Any wishing to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward. Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, sir.
Joe Espinola, the owner of 242 Mount Hope Street, which is directly behind, I believe, Lot Number 1. And I take exception to the fact that the attorney said that none of the lots around this property conform to the current standards. Mine does, and it's way above the standards. And I also take homage to the fact that that property has never served any purpose, that property has been farmed for many years by the neighbors, and I appreciate it. I've known Mr. Scott and his family for a long time. My parents, grandparents, and grandparents above them own this whole block, from Mount Hope to Roberts to Sixth and to Seventh Ave. My grandfather, great-great-grandfather, didn't want to build on that lot, sold it to the LeFabe's for them to farm. So that was a productive, maybe not money-wise for people, but it was productive to people in the neighborhood, because we were the beneficiaries of tomatoes and whatever Kevin's uncle was growing on those properties. So I have a picture. I don't know if you guys have walked this lot yet. Has anybody walked this lot? I have some pictures, if anybody wants to see.
Please come forward, sir, yes.
Well, say that my direct problem isn't that the development of this property is a problem with me, but I've been in that house, my family has been in that house for five generations right now, and probably going to go further than that. And if you look at the back right of the lot on the left side, it's 20 feet lower than the front of the lot on Robert Street. So the house that they're going to put on there is eight, seven for each level, up to the attic floor, which is three levels plus the attic, whatever it is. They might as well put blue lights on the top of it and call them the Freedom Towers. I know they say that it fits in with the neighborhood. There is not a house in that whole neighborhood that has a garage attached to it. Those houses are going to be taller than the ones that are there now. I have problems in my house right now with the drainage, and I would say that it's probably because that land isn't farmed anymore. I have sinkholes in my yard. I have sinkholes in the walkways. I have sinkholes everywhere. So for me to sit in my yard, that I have been sitting in that yard since I was a baby and since my parents were babies and their parents were babies, to sit in that yard, what time does the sun go away? 11 o'clock in the morning? It just, to me, I think my house, in my property, my family's property, that have been there for five generations, and then we continue to have it go further than that, I think the houses do not fit. I don't believe that that runoff is going to be susceptible to be able to be retained. I think if you're going to give some drainage considerations, that needs to go to Robert Street, and it needs to drain like everybody else's is. That neighborhood is not built to have drainage on-site, because their drainage right now is on-site. It just happens to be in my basement. So I would ask not to stop this, not to say that they can't build this. I just think that it's too much for that lot to handle, and it's not because of the size, it's because of the topography of the land. I've been around that since I was on my grandfather's knee. It doesn't hold water, and it's going to be a problem, and I understand Joe Clermont that has a problem with it, but Joe's way on the right side of that property in whether anything happens to it, and I appreciate the fact that he was able to get information about this project, because it's been slow to get to me. But I'm the biggest of butter. My property's the biggest of butter there, and for me to be looking out at a skyscraper and to put two houses on that lot, I think is too much to ask for someone who's been in that neighborhood since the late 1800s. And I don't want to get into a position where I stop the guy from building stuff there because our families are friends, and they've been friends for generations. But I think this is too much for this lot, and it's too much to ask the neighbors to have this imposed upon them. I'm going to be sitting in my backyard, looking up at 45 feet of house with a deck overlooking my house. The deck is probably going to be higher than the top of my house in the back. So I would ask some considerations for, I talked to the attorney for some privacy stuff. The deck doesn't have to be there. I mean, any one of you guys could go and buy that house off of John Lasana, the architect. The house is not built for this land. It was, it's a block house. It wasn't designed to be here. They need a house that's designed to be there, that doesn't impose on the neighborhood, that doesn't create a solar blockage for the neighbors, and I think that we could come to a compromise. But I think it's a little unreasonable to ask for me to sit in my backyard and look up at 45 feet of house in cement and decks, and what happens when they're out there on their decks, partying or doing whatever? What kind of privacy do I have? So I would ask to consider the neighbors, the people that are on the side, they've been there for years as well, people right adjacent to me on the right, their parents and grandparents knew my great-grandparents, and they've been there a long time as well. They're not, they're not, they're bashful. They don't want to come and say anything. They don't want to come and talk. They don't want to say anything. But I spoke with them. One of them works for the city of Lowell. He's on the other side. This is a little bit much for us to ask for. If you look in the neighborhood, all the houses look at each other, at the same plane. The only two houses, mine and the one next door, we're the only ones in the whole neighborhood between Roberts Ave and Mount Hope Street that are going to look up like this. All the other houses are on left, and that's probably why my great-great-grandfather didn't build a house there, because it just, at that time, probably wouldn't have been prudent to do it there. So I just think that this project doesn't fit that scope of that project, topography-wise and drainage-wise, and I think that they need to go back to the drawing board and come up with something that's going to be more acceptable to all the neighbors and take five generations of families into account when they come and say, "Can I build this here?" And I know it's not, I'm not given permission, and I know no one's asking me permission because I know the law is the law, but five generations is a long time. And to change everything like that, a little at a time is fine, but to be looking up at over 45 feet of a house in the back, I mean, it's going to block the sun. We have pear trees, we have vegetation that we grow, not much, but, you know, we have a little bit of tomatoes and whatever. We'll have no sunlight. I just was there this afternoon at 3, 4 o'clock. The sun's going to set right over that house, from my house. What time do we not get any sun anymore? So I just would, that's all I wanted, to just give my opinion of my house, my lineage to that house, and would hope that people would take that into account when you make a decision. And I appreciate your time, and thank you very much for what you do. I know it's a hard job.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition of this applicant, in opposition? Seeing that portion of the public hearing is closed, before we open up to the board, Mr. Theodore, did you want to have any comments about anything before we open to the rest of the board?
Yeah, you know, I respect his opinion. I mean, his family owned that property for a number of years. We thought we had reached out. I did send an email to you late in the game on Friday afternoon, when I heard from Attorney Clermont that you had some, what I thought were privacy issues. I didn't get a response back, but it seems that...
Which is a result of my due diligence.
Yeah, but... Which is not something we're going to be able to hammer out here outside in the hallway. So I respect what he has to say, and what I would like to do is to rework our plans and to rework them. He brings some expertise to the table. He's a builder. He understands the issues that have to be resolved, and to give us, I would say, we'll put this off for one month, for us to go ahead and come back after we meet with this gentleman to go over it. And it seems that we have handled the problems with respect to the drainage, and we'll see if we can handle everything else that we have.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Theodore. So you're open to continuance, to work out some of the details with some of the butters and neighbors?
Yes.
When are we meeting next, Mr. Alvarez? A month out, you said, Mr. Theodore? So are you looking at the April 8th meeting? Is that, would that work for you, Mr. Theodore?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
All right. Any objections to continuance of the April 8th meeting? Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I'd just like to ask one request that I was going to mention anyway, that the exterior elevations that are presented on the structures represent the grading that's shown on the site plan. Right now, they don't, and I'd like to see the grading that's on the site plan and the elevations coordinated for the next presentation, please.
I think with respect to this lot, it's called for that. I agree.
Also, Mr. Theodore, I think, taking this time also, you mentioned you were going to work with DPD on the landscaping plan, but now that these privacy issues have been brought up, obviously that would be a great opportunity to try to get a landscaping plan in effect that may help out with some of the privacy, potential privacy issues that may entail. So probably might want to come back with that as well.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kellman. Any other members have any comments before we continue?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Jumanja.
I just want to ask you, did you see any footprint of sinkholes in the area?
I haven't physically inspected it for any of the sinkholes. Mr. Hammer?
I have been on the site with soil scientists and the city engineer. We didn't see any noticeable sinkholes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jumanja. Mr. Briere, do you have any comments, sir?
I had one question for Mr. Espinola, if I may address it to him, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead. The floor is yours, Mr. Briere.
With respect to the potential for soil erosion during construction, you heard the, what the engineer has done to try to mitigate that problem. Did that satisfy you?
Like I said, I've been doing this a long time, and I don't know how on-site retention is going to save the runoff from it, but Attorney Clermont has asked to have a backup for mediation should it happens. And the question of Mr. Jumanja, I have pictures of the sinkholes on my lot. They're there. We fill them up every year, so there has been more drainage. We had some problems when Alma Street flooded. We all remember that, and that we put in two pumps, and I had nothing but cobwebs for many years after those were installed, and those pumps are running constantly as we speak. So it's a different lot right now. It's different with drainage that comes. That whole street in front of, on Robert Street, doesn't have any drainage at all. It's down on Sixth Ave.
Is that your biggest concern?
My biggest concern is the drainage, but also the eclipsing of my lot from the sun and any privacy that... and any privacy that any family members may have in the future. Because we have no intentions of selling this property. I appreciate the fact that the owners have owned it since 1920, but we don't intend to sell. So we're going to stay there. And looking up at 45 feet of the side of a house, I think it's a little too much for me to sit there and say that I think that is okay. So the drainage thing, I mean, the pumps will go on. I just think that those houses are too much for that lot.
Well, I just want to thank you. You did express your concerns and your potential for objection to this, but you spoke about it in the spirit of compromise.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's what the board wants to hear, compromise amongst the butters. I hope you guys can come to some resolve on this matter.
And I opened it up. I didn't want to stop the project. I just wanted some, like, mediation to people to just remember that my family's been there for five generations as well. And how do we make the whole neighborhood continuity still together in the same benefactors for everybody? I mean, there's plenty of people that everybody in this room knows that lives within a stone's throw of this property. So they live there, physically actually live around these houses. So it's, and my goal is to compromise and that's what I want. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Espinola.
Yeah, Mr. Vice, Mr. Espinola, can I?
Go ahead, Phil.
Sorry. So if I can understand the-
I can't hear you.
So you're more concerned about your view?
Yes, that's a big concern because it's-
Are you sure if there's any sinkhole or are you just trying to put up a case, something like that?
No, no, because if you look at the topographies that are on this plan, the back of the lot is where my house, the lot line, the lots are the same. The top of the street is 20 feet higher and they're proposing another 25 feet. So from my yard is going to be 45 feet plus the attic that I'll be looking at from, I got a picnic table in the yard, that's what I'll be looking at. And that's, that seems to be a lot.
So, Mr. Vice, if we can make whoever's going to build on the land, just to make sure there's no sinkhole because that might be very dangerous, just to make sure, you know, it's clear of that.
Yeah, that sounds good, Mr. Jemina.
I'd like to, excuse me, Mr. Peck.
Yes, Mr. Hammer, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to just elaborate on the flow of the water and the conditions out on the site. One of the downsides of having nice sandy soils and gravels is that if the groundwater's flowing through the sand and gravel, it's just not going to stop. And it can be coming from a much bigger watershed than we can imagine just sitting here now. But I do know that the water right now-
Trails down. Disappointing.
And like I said, when we did the soil tests and you have these nice sandy gravels, they're great soils for drainage. But we're very confident that the soils will take the drainage that we have coming off of the proposed development. There is a decrease in flow to that lower corner. But I don't necessarily doubt that you have sinkholes. I have some on my property as well. And a lot of times, they're from a decaying wood or some sort of fill material sometimes that-
It's 130 years old, this sinkhole, trust me.
Yeah, but it's, it's usually from a decaying material that's displacing the soil underneath and it's causing it to continue to decay then. But, you know, I'd be happy to look at it for you. But I can be rest assured that the water flow is better than average to be draining on the site and that the goal of the city is to try to get drainage to infiltrate on the site instead of going to a secondary means of drainage which would be to the city's sewer system so it doesn't overtax the city's drainage, so.
And what we need to, Mr. Vice Chair, what we need to keep in mind here is that there's going to be agitation, there's going to be excavation, there's going to be changes in this old soil that the engineer talks about. So things are going to change. Sometimes they change for the better. Most times, they change for the worse. And I don't know what kind of a drainage system, and for you, Mr. Vice Chair, has the engineering department for the city approved the drainage solution that you have there?
Yes, we've met with the city engineers department. The city engineers department witnessed the soil testing that was conducted out on the site. And we've reviewed the drainage system with wastewater as well.
So they're okay? They're going to sign off on-
Yes.
-your drainage stuff, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Hammer and Mr. Espinola. Any other comments from the board from Mr. from assessment, Mr. Hammer? Mr. Theodore?
I just have one comment. The way the site design is set up with the product, with the two new structures and pavement, I believe, I might, maybe you can correct me, that the existing drainage systems, which basically shed water that doesn't percolate, that'll be actually improved so that the new development will have less runoff with the infiltration systems. Is that correct, Mr. Hammer?
That's correct, Mr. McCarthy.
So the expectation is that your current conditions will be improved by the development, by having the infiltration, that's how infiltration systems work.
Thank you.
So that's actually a benefit.
I'm fully aware of drainage systems and whatnot, but sometimes they don't all work out like that. And so that's why I just asked if the city's okay with it. Then when I come back to the city and say, hey, I got stuff going on in my basement, they say, well, you know what, some things change with agitation of whatever. There's a lot of rocks that were buried underneath there from when they built all the developments. So that way, there's going to be some large amounts of excavation of rocks taken out of there, replaced with other materials to bring the landscape and the grade to where it needs to be. So that's why I'm saying I think that after the houses are built and after the drainage systems are in there, I think that it's a different lot than it is right now or different materials on the lot, having it be a self-sustained drainage system with no structures and no drainage to some overflow. That's all I'm saying. And it doesn't appear that that's what happened. It's just a, like a sandlot that it's going to drain into.
I don't know if there's a way that you could explain this better, but I think that the situation that's developed site is a strong improvement over what's there right now. And the neighborhood would be better off, for sure, with less runoff.
We would hope.
And you might even have less sinkholes in your yard based on, I mean, there should be improvements.
I'll still be looking at 45 feet of building. Thank you.
Well, the building structure is actually under 32 feet, which is the requirement by zoning that it meets. So it actually is less than zoning.
That's from Robert Street?
The building structure itself is actually less than zoning.
That's from Robert Street?
That's from how it's measured by zoning regulations.
That's from Robert Street?
No, it's how it's measured by the lot. Anyway, if you look at the zoning requirements, it's actually-
I know what it is. It's from Robert Street. From my street, it's 20 feet lower than Robert Street.
Okay.
Okay?
It's not just from Robert Street. It's actually all four sides are taken into consideration for the building height, is how it's measured. So it's the back, front sides as well.
Look at the topography again.
No, that's why I'm interested in seeing the elevations of the next-
Look at the topography again on that plan. It's 20 feet less than the front, in the front of the lot. It's 20 feet less.
I do know that it's, I've been to the site. I do know what the site looks like. Thank you.
So I don't see how you can say it's only 32 feet with all four corners taken into account.
The building needs to be elevated so that we can understand exactly what we're looking at and have a clear picture for everybody. Right now, we don't have that in the elevated drawings.
Mr. McCarthy, we have run the average grade plane calculation for the site in compliance with the city zoning ordinance for this to comply with the average grade to be less-
And Mr. McCarthy, that's all part of what we want to do is to put those elevations together, just like you wanted, so we can sit down with Mr. Espinola and so we can go over, I got your name right, right?
Yeah, you got it right.
Okay. So we can go over with him and have some working meetings and then come back here. And what we can resolve, we'll resolve. That's the whole purpose of the public hearing. And what we can't resolve, we'll air it out in public and have a hearing on that. So I thank you for your time tonight. And as it stands, we'll continue this till April 8th.
Very good.
Very well put. So seeing that, and any other comments by the board before we vote to continue this? Stay brave.
Anybody else want to yell at me?
I think you all said, thank you, Mr. Espinola. Thank you for your comments, sir.
I'm just kidding.
I just want to say real quickly, I think Mr. Brier stated very eloquently, in the spirit of collaboration, you know, I think continuing this, working with the neighbors, the butters, all the different parties, just to make sure we have a more better, suitable project just for the neighborhood, for the city, for everyone involved. So I thank you for your willingness to work, Mr. Theodore and Mr. Hammer and Mr. Espinola, with everyone, with the city, just to make sure everyone's on the same page and it's something that's palatable for the whole city. Seeing all the comments by the board, can we have a motion to continue this to April 8th, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2019-1, variances at 55 Robert Street, to be continued to April 8th.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Peck?
Approve continuance to April 8th.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to April 8th.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to April 8th.
Member Brier?
Approve continuance.
Member Jemina?
Approve continuance.
All right. Mr. Theodore, this has been approved to continue to stay brave. We'll see you in a few weeks, sir. Next on the agenda, ZB-2019-6 is a special permit. The applicant is UTEC Incorporated. The property is located at 70 through 80 Church Street. The applicant is seeking a special permit approval to open a manufacturing facility within the existing building at 70 through 80 Church Street. The building is in the downtown mixed-use zoning district and the use requires special permit under section 12.9. G and any other relief required under the low zoning ordinance. Mr. Crotto, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the zoning board. We are here tonight to respectfully ask for approval for 7080 Church Street for a special permit for manufacturing use for our woodworking center. I should say that we are very excited. It's the first time for many of us to be at the zoning board, so I'm joined by members of the UTEC team, from street workers to workforce managers to young adults, our transitional coaches. They're all super excited and they're excited because, to be honest, we've been working on this for a long time. This is pretty much kind of our dream building for woodworking and we've looked at a lot of different facilities and we want to be in Lowell and this is our chance. I also want to thank the city, DPD, Development Services. They've been super in helping us kind of think through this, not only in the search, but then this specific facility. And we really, we look forward to addressing the recommendations ranging from the dumpster and the recycling and the trash to the deliveries. And then also, the critical issue for us is the parking. That is by far the one that we really want to dig into. So I think our hope for tonight was to share a little bit about UTEC. We know that as you consider this, we want to make sure that you understand the public good component of this and what we're really committed to. As you may know, we've had two significant projects in the downtown. We want this to be equal, if not even stronger. We want to make a major impact. We want to share a little bit about the public good, the role of the building for us, how we can address any of the concerns, and then, you know, ideally moving forward in terms of the parking. So just as a quick background, and I'm actually going to be joined by our two keynote speakers, Felix and Alex, who want to share a little bit about why this building matters. And then I'll come back to kind of go into the details. But the quick overview, as you might know, UTEC, we serve young adults ages 17 to 25, years old, young adults who may have had challenges with past criminal involvement, gang involvement. We do work behind the walls in the correctional facilities where our street workers are on the street. And, you know, as a former street worker, I always say, the best thing we have is like what's in our back pocket and it's that job. And for us, we run our own businesses. And so woodworking is by far the enterprise that's grown leaps and bounds. So we have a line of cutting boards that we make and we're very pleased that Whole Foods has now given us the green light to go into 45 stores in North Atlantic to produce these cutting boards. And all we need is that space to be able to kind of fulfill that demand. We have new equipment we got from a state grant. Again, all we need is the larger space. So we're in about a 3,000 square foot facility now on Williams and this would allow us to grow into triple the amount of jobs that we have. So if it's okay, I thought maybe I'd start by letting Felix share a little bit about why this, you know, building matters and Alex, and then I can come back to specifically address the main points.
Yeah.
So Felix?
All right. Hello, how you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Well, my name is Felix Neres and I first started off with UTEC when I came out of jail and I had a friend of mine introduce me to one of the staff named Leslie. She's actually here right now. And she was actually getting me started and engaged with the UTEC program. And while during that process, I ended up getting incarcerated again. And during my incarceration, I noticed that the UTEC staff used to visit the jails, but they still do, but I noticed that they visited the jails to support, like, the youth that's in the jail. So, yeah, they offered me, you know, a ride when I came home and everything. So I took that in as love. That meant a lot to me. So, and the wood shop, the wood shop also means a lot to me because I see the wood shop as my future. That's my, that's my opportunity to not go back to jail, to not do what I had to do to go back to jail. And, yeah, that new space, that new space would mean a lot because we could get a lot done with all that space. And I feel like that, I feel like that would be like a big influence for people like, people like me, the youth that they have struggles going in and out of jail and being in the streets and living in poverty. I feel like it'll be a big influence to them because, you know, all it really takes is one person to take one step and show everybody how to do things the right way. And like, I tell the staff all the time, it's just a domino effect. Yeah, that's pretty much all I got to say.
Awesome. Thank you, Felix.
And then we're mindful of the time, but a lot of folks wanted to talk, but we're limited to two. And so I want to now introduce Alex Santana, who's also another member of Felix. They crush the cutting board game and very excited about this building and share a little bit what she's doing as well.
Hello. Whoa, Jesus. I'm Alex.
Good evening.
Well, let me just take this paper out real quick. Okay. What brought me to UTEC? A lot, a lot has brought me to UTEC. I came from nothing and I had, I had an issue come up and I got, I was about to get locked up, I was like 23, and thank God I didn't because UTEC came and showed up at my door, like Mel did. You know, saps to him. And he knocked on my door. I had no idea about UTEC at all. I didn't even know UTEC was a thing. I didn't even know, so I, they, I took a chance. I was scared, honestly. I didn't know the community. I was, I was a bad kid. I was, I was not in place. I wasn't in the right state of mind. I didn't want to do anything. I wanted to stay home. And, yeah. So UTEC opened up so many doors for me. I, it was like another home. I didn't, I didn't have a home, like, you know, where you could talk to people, you could vent, you could do anything, and I could at UTEC. UTEC, actually, let me see this, changed my life. It really did. And wood shop, what I do in the woodworking is great. I love making cutting boards. I didn't even know there was different types of wood, to be honest. Like, at all. And I made my mom a cutting board. She loved it, destroyed it, it's all right. And- And this new building would open so many freaking doors for us and like it would give us opportunities to work, expand because we do, we also do, what's it called?
Tongs.
Tongs. We do tongs. Who does tongs? We do. We make tongs.
Salad tongs.
Salad tongs, oh my God. So it's mad, it's mad cool. And, yeah, I freaking love UTEC. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick, thank you.
So, again, thank you. You know, we know that we're going to get into the details of the building and, but we know that when we come before you tonight, it's really to come before you and present what we think is the public good for this. And, you know, now this is our 20th year doing the work and we know that in addition to doing all the work on the street and gang peacemaking, we really want to be a contributor in terms of workforce development and that's what this building represents. So we're incredibly excited. We think that the main points, and I'm actually joined by our project manager Tara and Barry, if there's any questions, happy to kind of go into that as well. You have our drawings in front of you. I guess I'll be brief and say that the main issues that were raised in our meetings with the DPD, the first one being the delivery access and we feel as though we can adjust that and we'll make sure that we adjust that to the recommendations of the city so that it's confined before 8:00 AM and after 8:00 PM. And so we'll be able to do that. In terms of recycling and trash, we will also be able to make sure that we have a designated parking spot that's for that. We'll actually probably roll it out and roll it back in, but we'll make sure to address that issue as well. In terms of stormwater, it was recommended to make sure that we have a site plan for that and we will make sure that that happens as well. And then I would just say that the last item is the parking. And I guess I should provide a little context, so, you know, we wanted to be able to share, you know, the impact, the social impact that Felix and Alex, you know, talk about, in addition to the economic impact, because we wanted to make sure that you knew as you were considering this, we've looked at a lot of different buildings. This is it. So we want to be in Lowell, as you can imagine, to find a building 25, 28,000 square feet in downtown Lowell that has a manufacturing, we're probably the unicorn, there's probably not many folks that want to be manufacturing right there, we need to. We need to have it within walking distance of our, for our young people's thinking, coming back and forth, access the classrooms and go back and forth. This is it. And so after a year of working with them, we just wanted to make sure you understood, you know, for us, everything is really riding on this because it allows us not only the manufacturing, but it's unique, I guess it's unicorn-ness, is it can also have retail space. And so our goal is to expand to be able to have our social enterprise goods and have a hub for folks to be able to purchase that in Lowell. And so the parking is critical, without, not dramatizing it, but it's a deal breaker for us to be able to, you know, we will give up, you know, a spot, we'll also make sure that the spots are within the recommended dimensions, so if that means losing a spot, we'll do that. But if we have to do, and we fully appreciate the head-on parking and we've looked at that and we want to make changes, we want to have signage there, we want to have mirror, mirrors there, we want to do everything we can to best improve the safety of that, but if we lose the parking spots, we basically lose the retail. And we appreciate the offer to potentially have parking on Green Street, but as you know, that area, you know, if you're coming for retail, you need to pull right in there. You may not even know when you're on Green Street that we have a building and we have that. So that parking, the eight spots, is really critical for us. It allows us to either buy the building or not. And so that's why we wanted to, you know, raise up, you know, we're committed, we're fundraising, we have, you know, the ability to go in here and, you know, make sure that the neighborhood character remains, you know, strong, if not stronger. We know the social economic good, we know the public good, the fiscal impact, we're looking at tripling the number of jobs, we're looking at about 30 jobs in this facility. And so we just wanted to make sure you had the full kind of scope of work that we intend to do and we're super excited, that's why we got members of UTEC Nation here tonight and we're ready to go, ready to go right on day one to make this happen. And again, we appreciate all the work that the city's done in helping us get ready and happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crotto. Very, very well put together presentation and thank you to the speakers, very well spoken. We're going to open this hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. We're going to open it up to the board now for question and comments. The chair recognizes Mr. Jamena.
Mr. Weiss, I don't have any questions. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jamena. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier.
I'd like to begin by expressing just how commendable your work and your mission is. For those watching tonight, the acronym UTEC stands for?
Great question. It stood for United Teen Equality Center and then we started, we started serving 13-year-olds and now we're serving really, you know, 18 to 24, so we made it easier and just changed it to UTEC.
Well, your group and your speakers should be applauded tonight. They certainly attested to the success.
Thank you.
UTEC. All right, now let's get into the nitty-gritty, okay? What I'm concerned about is the, is the concerns that the Department of Planning and Development had. Are you familiar with the memorandum that was issued?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to just read directly from the memorandum. During the in-person meeting, the city's transportation engineer stated that the head-on or head-in parking is an unsafe design. You agree?
I think that, to be honest, I can't speak to, you know, knowing the issues, you know, fully. We understand, we appreciate the concerns.
Well, you certainly understand that the city has an issue with that.
Absolutely, yeah.
So further, the city is planning to redesign Church Street.
Yeah.
And in an effort to make it safer for all the users and there could be some issues with that head-in parking and the existing curb cut. So how are we going to address that curb cut issue as to not conflict with the future plans that the city has for that area, for traffic and pedestrians? I think that's, I think that's a question for the pros over here.
Do you want it? Yeah.
You want to state your name and address for the record, sir?
Barry Gannick, Gannick Architects in Carlisle. The handouts that I just gave you show the location of the existing parking spaces. They are, they qualify for basic code-required spaces at the moment, they're deep enough. The offset of the building back from the corner of the building is 19 feet 9 inches. We are planning to utilize one of the spaces for a dumpster. The backing out is the concern that Mr. Brier has and we're hoping that with signage, that, you know, it's head-in parking and that we can put traffic safety mirrors on each side of the parking area that will help visibility, that that will suffice for the city's concerns.
You're committed to working along with the city to ensure that the safety of the pedestrians and traffic flow is in accordance with the future plans for the site?
Yes, of course, and then the cars will pull in and maintain a pedestrian path.
Okay.
Behind them. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a few questions, but I am excited about UTEC's expansion in this site and I can't think of a better use for this site than seeing UTEC take it and develop it with retail. I just think that you're a phenomenal organization and having a retail component downtown is great. I'm excited to hear about what other products because I love your cutting boards, I've got a lot of your cutting boards. I've given a lot of your cutting boards away. I'm looking for something else. I'll do the tongs and, anyway, I'm thrilled and I'm really excited about this endeavor of yours. The city does need to have a safety component as I'm sure you want to see as well in front of this facility. I know at UMass Lowell, we had a, I think the curb cut was over 60 feet and that's on, I believe it's Fletcher Street, that crossing, Lowell Crossing, building that was redeveloped from the hospital. And there was lights and I think there was a sound or there was some, there were some sensors that would alert pedestrians as to vehicles, but there might be other things besides mirrors that could be used, but I know that there's a lot of things available that we could implement here. So I don't think that the parking should go away. I think we should definitely have as a condition that you'll work with DPD to resolve the parking design to the benefit of the retail component as well as the future plans for Church Street.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I, and we did look at, we know that obviously there are, you know, sites in the city that have that, head-on and, you know, to your point, you know, we're, the city's been great to work with and we look forward to doing that. We know we need a minimum of seven to eight spots. Anything we can do, and if it entails fundraising to add more, you know, components to it and lights, we will do it. Because, you know, to be honest, you know, we take the safety, you know, incredibly seriously. We wouldn't be looking at this building if we thought that we couldn't do it in a safe way. We're committed to making sure that we fully revitalize it and the safety is a part of it, so, thank you.
Great. Can you speak to the dumpster piece, though? I don't see on the plan where you're expecting the dumpster to be and I know that the comments mentioned something about maybe the dumpster actually being located inside the building and rolled out.
On the lower part of the plan on A1.0?
Yep.
The first space next to the loading dock that you'll see is, first of all, the dumpster can be wheeled in off hours inside the building at that point, or it can be wheeled out and sit in that first parking space.
When you're talking about dumpster, you're talking about something the size of five yards or 10 yards or?
Yeah, like 10 yards, something on wheels, but movable.
Okay. And I know that we had talked about a similar condition on one of the properties of a multifamily, I believe, that came up a few months ago and that was the same kind of solution that we ended up with was a rollout.
Right.
That was able to stay away from property, but it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we need to get into screening of it when it's actually outside.
Okay.
And so I think that that's something that I'd like to see, you work with DPD to identify if screening is required and to implement whatever screening is necessary.
Let's do it. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Great. I don't know if there was any other, oh, so we're going to change the hours of the delivery to be before 8:00 and after 8:00 PM. Okay, and you're going to work with DPD to develop any stormwater mitigation that's required? Is that correct?
Yes.
Signage on the building, is there anything suggested?
Yeah, there'll be a sign, you know, UTEC at the retail space, there'll be signs for deliveries, I would assume.
Is the idea?
No flashing neon, I don't think.
Okay, is there, so you're going to work with the existing zoning regulations for signage?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. End of story, absolutely.
Right.
I'm thrilled to death. I love it. Thank you very much.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. I did have some questions about the parking because I noticed that there were some recommendations by transportation with regards to the configuration of some of the parking and one thing that they mentioned was try to utilize back-end diagonal side parking, which seems to be fairly optimal, but I don't know, I mean, there's no measurements here on what the parking spaces are, so have you tried to at least configure that? Because it seems to me, from what you're saying, putting the dumpster on that parking spot near the loading dock, if you configured it to diagonal parking with back-end, you can put that dumpster on the opposite side, even though I know it's not easy to roll out and roll in, but, and kind of utilize those spaces, but I mean, has that been, has that been, you know, thought of or has there been any plans to like do that or?
Yes, we've looked at that and it reduces the parking in half to do that and you're still backing out just at a quicker angle.
Well, you're backing in, you're back, I'm just configuring it this way because Church Street and that portion is one-way. So when you're backing in, it, I mean, depending, you can utilize what the traffic flow is at that point to back in at any point, but when you're backing out, taking into account the traffic safety mirrors and anything else you're going to put in for that, depending on the type of person, who's coming in, who's going out, it's going to, I could see what the city's concerns are and especially if they're going to start, from what it's saying, is they're going to be start looking at reconfiguring the transportation of that area, the transportation area of that, that part of the street, so. I would, I would try to condition it again, even though you're going to continue to work with DPD on some of these other parking designs, I would strongly try to like look at it and see if there's something that can be utilized on diagonal parking and I'll take it with whatever DPD and transportation. As long as you're working with them to go over it, I mean, it's, that's their, that's their thing, so.
Yeah, and we fully appreciate it and I think that we, you know, Barry looked at this and to Barry's point, you know, when we, when we did that, we basically got down from eight to four spots and so that was the, that's the biggest thing for us and, and again, again, we, we want to make sure we can look at everything from the lights to the, to the mirrors to do it, but we know if we go down to eight to four, again, it's probably not a building that we can be able to move into for the retail and that's, that's just the, we don't want to dismiss it, but we know that's the, that's the challenge for us.
I appreciate that, I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to get my sense of, that's what they're, they say they would be optimal, but if it can't be done, it can't be done. But I'm sure, I'm sure you, you can work it out with DPD and transportation.
Yeah.
And I guess to that effect, while, so what, why don't you give me a timeline, what's the timeline of how things are going to go between the wood shop and the retail and how things, what's the planned timeline on?
Yeah, so, and I should clarify, so we have an, we have an initial agreement right now on the building, we've been working with the seller exclusively, where obviously this is, the contingency is this. And so if this goes forward and it's really obviously the primary thing is the parking, if we know we can have the parking spots we need, then we go move forward and purchase the building. There's some environmental, I mean, again, this is why we say we're, I guess now it's public information, but there's some significant environmental issues. And so adding to the unicorn-ness of this, we're willing to take that on so that the building doesn't sit idle. We know that there's significant environmental, so tonight, if we have the approval to be able to do this fully with the parking, then we're committed to move forward, execute the purchase and sale and then move in at a phased, so we would move in like phase one. We've already met with the building department, was great, we met with Commissioner Fuller, we feel good about that, we can move right in, to be honest, once the environmental work is done, probably within two months. And then we would phase out the rest of the work, probably over the next, you know, 12 to 18 months.
Okay, so phase one is basically if you move in, phase one is the woodworking shop.
Exactly.
Phase two would be the retail.
Exactly, yeah.
Part of that, so. What, so when we get to that, when the retail comes in, so the parking spots, will those be utilized only to retail or would that be, or is that for employees too or something?
No, we would actually, the parking would be all for retail.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we would actually, we wish we had more parking there, but we would find other spots.
Yeah, so, yeah, when you do that too, there's going to have to be some signage that would certainly, once, I, again, you could work that out with transportation and think that's maybe, but yeah, you would have to have some signage to note, you know.
Retail only.
Retail, you know, only for customers, you know, employees can't park there and, you know, or anybody else or stuff like that, so. But yeah, I'm, I am extremely excited about this, I appreciate, you know, everything that UTEC's done for all these and this, you know, this, the speakers, Felix and Alex are, you know, it's just amazing.
Thank you.
What the stories, if everybody could talk, I'd be, I'd be enthralled by, I'm sure everybody's story that if everybody had the chance to talk, but we'd be here till, you know.
Yep.
All ends of the night, so, but I would, I appreciate everything that UTEC does and, you know, as Felix said, I mean, you get one person and it's a domino effect, I think, he's absolutely right, you know, just one person can knock over, you know, inspire another person, another person, another person and it's just great that what you guys are doing and I wish you the absolute best of luck, so.
Thank you very much and again, thank you to the zoning board. We've now, this will be, knock on wood, our third project and the work that we do to be able to provide the jobs wouldn't be because so many partnerships in the city and the zoning board is one of them, so, so we appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, thank.
Miles is very excited for the wood shop.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan, for your comments. You know, I, I agree with my colleagues. You know, I, I agree with my colleagues, you know, I do have some concerns with, with parking, but I know UTEC and Greg and then the whole group, the whole organization's gonna do amazing work to make sure that safety, pedestrian access, nothing is impeded or blocked. You know, I, I really think this, this project will benefit not just like UTEC or downtown Lowell, but the whole city as a whole, you know, the, with the job growth and, and the long-term employment for people. I, you know, I, I think this is a project that, you know, we, I can support for sure. You know, like, like Mr. Callahan said, the speakers were amazing, I wish we could hear all of them, you know, but my concerns are, was alleviated tonight after hearing all the comments by the builders and Mr. Cottrell about, you know, working with the city and meeting everyone halfway with all the, all the issues, so I, I will fully support this. With that being said, do we have a few conditions by the board?
Yeah, I can clarify a couple, maybe Dennis, Dennis can clarify. So I think that some of the conditions were, number one was deliveries not to be made, to be made before eight AM and after eight PM, not in between.
Yep.
Was there any, anything, I mean, well, how did deliveries, I mean, would there be anything there, would you have to come in, in between during the course of the day, like something?
No, we actually, there was an earlier application, I think it said two to three times a week, it's actually probably once every two weeks.
Okay.
And on average, right now, we're doing it early in the morning before seven thirty, so we feel pretty confident we can, we can maintain that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure there's no emergent, like this things, like come up in emergencies or whatever, or something.
Yeah.
The other one, I think, I had mentioned was work with DPD and the transportation department on parking design, including, you know, the potential of diagonal, you know, trying to do diagonal spacing and any other signage, including safety mirrors signage, you know, those beeping signs sometimes you'll see down in the Boston parking lots, you know, and then I think Dennis said drainage, they're working on drainage too.
Yeah, I think we need a condition that states that we'll work with DPD to develop a plan to mitigate stormwater drainage. And I had one other, I think, so.
Go ahead, Mr. McCarthy.
So we'll have four, I think, totally, and then one to show on the site plan to designate a spot for the rollout, five to ten yard dumpster, and to work with DPD to provide any required screening.
Are you agree on all those conditions, Mr. Cottrell?
Yeah, just a clarification, so I think we definitely could agree to all those, the one, I guess, the clarification on the parking, only because we are getting ready to move forward and execute the purchase and sale, and being able to have at least seven spots is a critical piece for us, and so I just, you know, we're, the city and DPD have been great to work with, we'll work with them and all that, we just wanna be able to know leaving tonight, we could have the seven spots, because that's gonna depend on whether we can move forward with the, the purchase and sale.
I, I can, I could think of do a condition, just as long as you look at it, and just to configure it to, no more than seven spots, I guess, would that be?
Up to seven spots.
Or up to seven spots?
Okay.
We can condition it on that, so, I just, I just think it's just something, I understand if you already looked at it and you can't do it, that's fine, but I'd just like to have track, transportation and DPD just kinda take a peruse and see if it's, if, if, maybe they have some different idea, maybe they think it's possible, but.
Yep.
You haven't looked at, so, but we can do it, as the condition would be up to seven spots.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
All right, so those five conditions, you, you agree on two?
Yes.
Four, okay, four, four conditions, excuse me.
Tara's.
Hi, I'm Tara, I'm of Affirmative Investments, and we've helped them do their development of their other sites. I just wanted to clarify on the, two things on the dumpster. One is I can, would you rather have the dumpster inside or the, or outside? Just trying to understand the city's perspective here.
Preferably the outside.
You would prefer it outside?
Uh, no, actually.
It's a rollout, I guess, if it, if you have it inside and roll it out, then Dennis, I don't know.
I do believe the way the condition is written, that it was interested in being inside and rolled out for being emptied.
Okay.
Okay, and then the, the second question on the screening is if it, I think you were relaying this before, if it's rolled in and out, it may not need screening, is that?
If it's rolled out just for emptying, it doesn't need screening, but if it's left out for, you know, eight hours during the daytime, then it may need screening.
Great, so it would be great if the condition was clear that you're not requiring screening unless the, the traffic department, or whoever it is, DPW is.
So the way I was reading the, the condition was that you'd work with DPD to provide any screening required, so DPD would be determining that based on whether it was inside or outside.
Okay, so they may say you don't need anything, it's up to them.
Right.
Okay, got it.
But you may find when you're doing the plans, that you may not be able to provide for an interior dumpster, and you may need to provide for an exterior dumpster, and in that case, then you'd need to work with DPD to provide the screening if that's the case.
Got it, okay.
That's how I was intending the.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Alvarez, do you have any comments about anything so far from the city's perspective?
So the initial application was just for the special permit. To allow those parking spaces to remain, the board may need to grant additional dimensional relief, at the minimum would be for the curb cut, which the current curb cut exceeds the maximum in the district, and potentially additional relief depending upon the layout of the parking spaces for setback from the building, which is five feet, and minimum setback from the lot line, which is three feet. Having not seen the plans that are in front of you today, I can't say what specific relief would be necessary, but potentially other dimensional relief would be necessary for those parking spaces.
Well, with that being the case, we can just approve, well, we can approve the change in use, but they'll have to come back for dimensional relief, is that the case, or could we, because the only thing that's been noticed, I understand, was just the change in use, correct?
So the way that the notice is written, it says in all other relief necessary, so you are able to vote separately on the variance, if you choose to do so, for the curb cut or for other dimensional relief for the parking spaces, but you would need to vote specifically on that, on those items as well.
All right. I'll leave to the board's discretion, I had no problems doing, voting on that today, though, Mr. Chairman, but whatever the other board members wanna do.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I also have no, no issues with voting for a separate variance for the curb cut and any dimensional relief. Does any of the other members have any comments or questions? Chair recognizes Mr. Jimena, go ahead, Mr. Jimena.
Yes, sorry, I said I didn't have any question, but it just came up. Do you have any provision for handicap parking, since it's a business?
Currently, I don't think there are any stripe, but we're happy to look with traffic if we need to stripe one for a handicap.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question on the separating them? So I agree Jared hadn't seen the, the new plan, the new plan really just showed some parking signs and, and mirrors, it didn't change any of the dimensional regulations, so if there was a possibility of you voting on both tonight, knowing it was, you can ignore these kind of plans, because we're still gonna work with traffic on all of those other pieces, it would be great to, to, to do that on the existing dimensions that Jared had mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by the board?
I agree that I think we should go forward with the relief for the curb cut being eighty-seven feet and whatever required relief for the dimensional characteristics of the parking.
Okay, perfect. No further comments by any of the members, any questions? Okay.
I just have a quick question, Jared, as far as Phillip's comment about handicap spaces, that would be, that would be handled by transportation, right?
I believe there's a trigger for the certain number of spaces that you're providing in a lot, and then how many handicap spaces you're supposed to provide. This development may not reach that, that threshold, but that is something that we could, we could check.
Okay, just wanna make sure, just wanna make sure we're clear on that on the record, so, thanks.
All right. Seeing no further comments by the board, can we have a motion, please?
I just wanna be clear, Jared, are we doing two motions or two, two votes, or is it just one for the special permit and the variances?
Depends on how you'd like to structure the motion. Ordinarily, you vote separately on the special permit and the variances when you have other petitions, but it's up to the board's discretion.
Do you have preference?
I don't have a preference, I don't know if the board does, we could, you know, kinda all lump sum.
I mean, I guess since we're doing, one version is a special permit for change of use, and then the others are for dimensional, dimensional, we probably should do two votes, so that's my, that's, that would be my, that would be my suggestion.
That sounds good, Mr. Callahan.
And we'll do that with the same conditions for both.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Seeing no further comments, can we have two motions, the first motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the special permit for seventy to eighty Church Street, for providing a manufacturing facility within the Church Street location with the previously mentioned four conditions.
Can I have a second on the motion, please?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Callahan, can I have a roll call, please?
Member Peck?
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approve with conditions.
Member Jimena?
Approve with conditions.
Your first petition has been approved, going on to the second motion, can we have a second motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand nineteen dash six for variances, for dimensional variances for parking and curb cut for seventy to eighty Church Street with the previously mentioned four conditions.
Can I have a second to the motion, please?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Callahan, roll call, please.
Member Peck?
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approve with conditions.
Member Jimena?
Approve with conditions.
Second petition has been approved, we wanna wish you the best of luck, great project, so thank you for your time and efforts and everything, we appreciate it.
Right.
Good luck.
Thank you again, yeah, thanks to the city and thank you to the zoning board, really appreciate it.
[applause]
dash nine, the petition is a special permanent variance, the applicant is Jagmahon Chaney, located at one twenty-two Sixth Street. The applicant is seeking a special permanent variance approval for a property at one twenty-two Sixth Street located in the traditional neighborhood two-family zoning district. The applicant proposes to convert an existing studio apartment into a three-bedroom apartment by using a former commercial unit on the ground floor. The property will remain a four-unit dwelling, the applicant seeks a special permit under section four point five, non-conform, non-conforming uses and structures to alter the non-conforming use and a parking variance under section six point one point four, and any other relief required by the Lowell Zorn ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Chaney.
Good evening. My name is Jagmahon Chaney, I'm the owner of this property, and thank you very much for chairman and a member of the zoning board and a zoning department staff. I really thanks for the, you know, Patrick Burns had been helping me a lot, I didn't know what to submit and whatnot, it took me a while, it took me a while, like these many years to come forward to convert this conver, you know, commercial zoning to residential, because I had been owning this property for almost fifteen years, and so somehow, we were using this commercial zoning for a convenience store for a while, so the property is located in a two-family zoning, and I lost the grandfather's zoning because of, every time I rent, I end up dealing with this, some illegal activity is going on, and so I had to stop, you know, renting to people, because I was just getting tired of it. So this commercial space has been sitting empty for a number of years, and in the past, I think we had a potential tenant, we came forward to the building department, and they says I lost the zoning, and I have no choice to utilize that space. So at, at that time, I met building Inspector Martin, and I gave him a tour for the property to see what we can do and how we can utilize the best of it. So since I have a four-family pre-existing, and obviously I cannot use the five-family because it would become a commercial, and it cannot be in, the residential zoning will not allow it, so the only choice I have is to attach to the existing, the unit that I have, and I can either attach it to the two-bedroom, or I can go back and attach it to the, the studio apartment I have in the backside of it. So that's where I'm looking for a special permit, the approval for the zoning change, and since we are gonna increase the bedrooms, I believe I need a, a special variance for the parking also to be approved. Since there's no off-site parking, it's, everything is on a street parking, and in the past, when we had a, a store uses, we have a two-designated parking in front of this, the store, which was on a Sixth Street, one twenty-two Sixth Street, and we used to have a sign by city that two, you know, dessert parking, fifteen minutes parking for the commercial uses, but that sign had been taken off while, like, maybe five or seven years ago. So this is where, I think this will help the community, because I've been doing property management for a while, and I do get every day two or three phone calls looking for apartments, and I don't have any. I got a CTI called me today, and I got a Pine Street, no, the, sorry, the Middlesex Transition Team called me, they want to relocate, the family had been suffering. Unfortunately, I don't have any apartments. I'm fully occupied, which is good to have that problem, but I'm trying to help the, the city how we can provide the, the housing, which is a more problem than a commercial space. So with that, I will be open for any discussion or any question you might have, so.
Great, then thank you, Mr. Chaney, for, for your comments. I'm gonna open up the, the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this hearing, in favor, in favor, seeing that portion of public hearing is closed, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing that portion of the public hearing is closed, I'm gonna open up to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Jimena.
Okay, so looking in the picture here, so you're gonna, you're asking for permission to park right in front, to, to park in front here?
Yeah, the parking is, is gonna be on a street.
Right here, right?
Yes, yeah. So since this property is on a corner of a beach street and a Sixth Street, it'd have accessibility on a both side to park, so the, the two-car parking is gonna be on a Sixth Street side, and two-car parking is gonna be on a beach street side, which we never had a problem, you know, I mean, I've been there for a while, and nobody ever called me that I can't find a parking, and I do have one parking sign was given by the city that, for residential parking for my tenants.
Yeah, but you are asking for two cars, right? Because according to you, you had a sign.
No, no, I get only one sign, but the maximum, I can park four, but the tenants will find the parking, you know, wherever they can find it, you know, I mean, I can't control that part.
Yeah, my only concern is like, I hope it doesn't infringe on the zebra crossing, because sometimes when somebody comes from work, they can park anywhere.
That's true.
So, so how, how are you gonna deal with that, if we grant you?
Well, if they can't find a parking, then they will go five feet, ten feet away, and since it's a crossing of the both Beach Street and Sixth Street, and on a corner, on the other side of, opposite of mine, the, the, the one-man school was converted to apartment building, so the whole street of that side is also available for the public parking.
All right, I mean, my concern is like you have a big house, and the, the parking is, is an issue.
It's a four-family and it's still four-family, it's a, I'm just using two more bedrooms to accommodate the more families.
All right, I will listen to my colleagues, and I'll hold my peace, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimena. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Your intention is to convert the existing studio apartment to a three-bedroom, correct?
Yes.
Are you aware of the comments from the fire department with respect to your proposal?
Yeah, I think.
Requiring a sprinkler system?
Yes, I agree, there's, there's always a concern when it comes to the sprinkler system. I'm not touching the property less than, actually, I'm not touching renovating less than, actually, twenty-five percent of it. So I don't know whether it will trigger or not, I don't know. Uh, at this point, I don't know. My architect will tell or the building inspector will tell when I will pull the, um, rehab permit.
But my question was, you're aware that the likelihood is, according to the comments from the fire department, that you may require that sprinkler system now that it's, you're, you're changing from a commercial, commercial three-family to a residential four?
No, I already have a four-family plus the, um, commercial.
You have a sprinkler system currently?
No, I-
Because it wasn't required?
Right.
Right? But, uh, excuse me, yes, that is-
Um, I bel- I believe the, um, requirement is if the work area is over fifty percent of the floor that, uh, you're working on, so that first floor area, if your work area is more than fifty percent, then the sprinkler requirement comes into play.
Okay.
And you seem to be on the threshold, depending on how you reconfigure that studio.
Right.
So there may be a situation where your architect can configure that first floor so that the sprinkler doesn't get triggered, but nonetheless, it's not a big hardship, I don't think, to have the sprinkler system and I don't think the sprinkler system-
No, right now I don't have a sprinkler system.
But, but it, it also is not necessarily a big hardship to add it to just that unit that's being affected. There are, uh, systems out there, so.
Okay.
I think there's, uh, way around it, maybe, if your architect-
Right, right.
Wants to pursue that, but there might be a reason to have it in, in one way or the other.
Right, so, yes, you know, the, Mr. Burns did mention to me about that, you know, the, the comment and he says, "You should be aware of it, it might trigger it," and I says, "When do I have to address the issue?" You know, I mean, obviously I had to see the, is it cost-effective or not, or, uh, i- it makes sense or not?
Right.
Um, but he says, "Well, first you need to do zoning approved, you know, parking and the zoning change and then you go and deal with the rest of it, but you just can't worry about everything else right now."
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brier. Um, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I d- I have a couple of questions, um, but, um, you really seem to take good care of this property.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry that your commercial space isn't thriving, but I can understand that location doesn't seem to be the best spot for commercial anyway, so I think converting it to a usable, uh, rentable, um, apartment makes a lot of sense.
It's probably make more sense also.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and all neighborhood will-
Right.
Take it as a more positive than sitting a, a sore thumb building, empty, and every time I go there for any reason and everybody say, "Oh, are you opening a store?" I said, "No, I'm not opening a store again."
Um, there wasn't, um, so, so the floor plans indicate, uh, windows, um, so there does seem to be an attitude that you're basically taking what's on the facade above and drawing it down to create a similar look, but could you just talk about what you wanted to talk about?
I talked to my architect and he says, "First you have to get the zoning approved and then we had to resummit the drawings, the, how everything is going to be look like. All the windows have to be restructured and the, all the, um, the wire, the, the screens that we have, uh, up of the window, they have to be taken out and the doors are going to be changed." Obviously, right now I have a commercial door and then it has to be a, a fire-rated, you know, residential door and the, right now the windows are higher because it's a commercial, so they have to be on a window, like, you know, the four feet, you know, the threshold. So they are all going to be restructured and the new drawings are going to be submitted for the permit, purpose anyway.
So, so is your intent to redo the windows only or is the brick facade actually being left in place and reworked for the new windows or-
I think the brick facade was a just artificial, I, I don't think so it's a real brick, I think it's a just, uh, you know, the artificial-
Believe you're right, a veneer.
Just to make it look a commercial, but it's all going to be changed, it's all going to be, it was, you know, vinyl siding and new thermal, and windows and everything, yeah, everything is-
So that it'll actually look like a con-
Residential.
One, one, one system.
It will be look like a residential, yes.
Great, great. Um, and so, uh, we're basically taking what was two designated parking spaces for retail and making those now available for the larger residential unit.
Right.
As high, as I see it, kind of.
Currently, they are using, the, the two parking in front of my property, nobody else is using except my tenant.
Right.
W- we have a good understanding across people, you know, they al- already have their off-site parking, so across from me, uh, there's a house, they have their, uh, inside parking, off-site parking, and next door, one twenty-eight Sixth Street also have six or ten car parking, their own.
Is there, um, any, uh, changes that are going to need to take place with, um, trash pickup? Right now you have city-
I have a city pickup right now.
Pickup?
I used to have a commercial, when I closed the store, I went to the Gunther and I filed the permit and he gave me four barrels. I do have a four recycle, four trash.
And that'll remain because you're going to-
And that's all, it's going to be same.
Yep.
It's not going to change.
Yep, great, okay. Um, terrific.
Thank you.
I think the layout makes a lot of sense the way you have it.
Thank you.
I like the fact that it's somewhat elevated from the street, um, so it's a nice, nice design. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chani, thank you, uh, for the presentation. I just want to confirm, there's no parking, uh, at all on the property, correct? There's no parking?
The building is sitting right on just the block of it.
No, I just want to make sure that we're clear, you know, it's all off-street parking, there's nothing else available.
There's no off-street parking.
As far as that, because right, uh, right now, um, what you're facing is you got to go up one more space on, uh, on the chart, but I don't believe that's, since there's no parking, there's no off-street parking available.
Right.
It, it, it seems like it's a non-issue to me. Uh, the one, uh, the one thing it was that, that, uh, that did come up, I was looking through the comments, was, um, uh, there's exterior bars on the windows from the prior, uh, commercial use.
Right, that, we, uh, yeah, we talked about it.
You can take those, those are coming down, right?
Oh, yeah, they have to, they have to because they are higher.
Yeah.
And they have to come down and they have to have a residential, you know, bi-
So we're going to, yeah, we're going to condition that, that those-
Yeah, the windows are going to be-
No bars on the exterior windows.
And the more windows are going to be added for each bedroom as required by the building code and all that, yeah.
Yep, yeah. But, I mean, I, I sympathize with your situation as far as the commercial thing is concerned and like, yeah, there's, you got to do something with it, you can't just let it sit there.
Right.
Uh, and it, this seems to be the more feasible way of doing it, um, by converting that studio into a three-bedroom.
Right.
And, uh, you know, I think, uh, you know.
And if you look at the layout, you know, I mean, I don't have to do too much of break, breaking anyway, you know, I mean, everything is going to stay same.
Yeah.
You know, two bathrooms are going to be combined to the bigger bathroom and a kitchen and a bathroom, I had to make more.
Hmm, yeah.
And some partition walls, so it's not going to be that much.
Seems like a pretty much a no-brainer to me, Mr. Chani, so I wish that's a lot.
Very great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, you know, I, I agree with my colleagues, uh, Mr. Chani, I th- I think this is a good repurpose of your property, um, you know, converting it to, uh, all residential, um, and, and like you said, there's a need in the city, um, for housing and for, for units.
Right.
Um, so you know, I, I don't see any concerns, I think, um, we do have one condition, um, that the memo, the memo from the city-
Right.
To remove the bars from the windows, you know.
Yeah.
I think that's the only condition that I heard from the board.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, Mr. McCarthy, go, go ahead, sir.
So, in understanding your intent, I think we could maybe even describe that intent in the condition and I would suggest a condition that might state that the existing facade be reworked to incorporate residential double-hung windows and siding compatible with the second floor design and remainder of the first floor.
I have no problem.
That, that sounds good, you agree with so that, Mr. Chani?
That is going to happen anyway, that's perfectly fine with me.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, any other comments by, by the board?
I, I'd just like to ask, um, you've got a beautiful flat roof here on the structure, have you given any thought to adding solar and using solar panel array on the roof?
I don't know.
Just, it just seems like a natural there in that location where you don't have a lot of trees on the street that are going to be shaded.
Actually, I have a very high elevation too, you know, I mean, right, right on, um-
Yeah.
The, coming down from the hill.
Might want to consider it.
I never thought of it, but I will be happy to consider your, you know, opinion. Thank you. It might be a plus for me too.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments by the board, um, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand nineteen dash nine for special permit and variance, um, special permit for non-conforming uses and structures, um, and a parking variance and relief required for, um, uh, one twenty-two Sixth Street with the following condition, that the, um, uh, exterior facade be required to incorporate residential double-hung windows and siding compatible with the second floor design and remainder of the first floor.
Uh, can we have a second to the motion, please?
Second.
Uh, second one by Mr. Brier, can we have a roll call, please?
Member Peck?
Approve of conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve of condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approve of condition.
Member Brier?
Approve with conditions.
Member Jamina?
Approve of conditions.
Thank you.
Um, you've been approved, sir, congratulations.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Um, next on the agenda, under new business, um, the petition is a variance and a special permit, um, the applicant is seventy-eight through ninety Lakeview Ave, LLC, uh, the property located at sixty-four and seventy-eight through ninety and ninety-eight point one Lakeview Ave. Um, the applicant is seeking a variance and special permit approval to install eight wall signs, three freestanding signs and two awning signs for a new Domino's restaurant at sixty-four, seventy-eight through ninety and ninety-eight point one Lakeview Ave. Um, the applicant is seeking a variance and special permit approval to install eight wall signs, three freestanding signs and two awning signs for a new Domino's restaurant at sixty-four, seventy-eight through ninety and ninety-eight point one Lakeview Ave. The property is in the urban mixed-use zoning district and the proposed signs are required variance under section six point three point two point eight for a freestanding sign in excess of the maximum allowed height and size and under section six point three point two eighteen for wall signs exceeding the maximum square footage, special permits under section six point three point four for all wall signs, awning signs, freestanding signs and attorney illuminated signs and for any other relief required under the Lowell Zorn Ordinance. Uh, good evening, Ms. Flood.
Excuse me, before we get started, I have to inform you that I'll be recusing myself from this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Good evening, Ms. Flood.
Good evening, Attorney Catherine Flood here on behalf of seventy-eight to ninety Lakeview Avenue LLC. Here with me tonight is the manager of the LLC, Jeff Schenbeckler. Um, we're in tonight regarding a request for a variance and special permit for approval for signs for the premises located at sixty-four, seventy-eight to ninety and ninety-eight point one Lakeview Avenue. The applicant has already received site plan and special permit approval from the City of Lowell Planning Board to redevelop the existing building into a Domino's Pizza restaurant. In order to complete the development, um, we are here to request signs. The, um, it may appear that we are requesting a lot of relief, but in a UMU zone, the code does not allow any signs by right. So for every sign that, um, the applicant wishes to put on the building, we have to request relief from the zoning board. We are requesting a variance under section six point three point four eight for a freestanding sign which is in excess of the maximum allowed height and size. The applicant is proposing a free sign, freestanding sign in, of twenty-two feet and width of thirty point sixty-six. We're requesting a variance under section six point three point four eighteen for wall size, wall signs exceeding the maximum square footage. These are on the signs which will be facing the parking lot, not on the two sides. We're also requesting a special permit under section six point three point four for freestanding sign, for wall signs, for internally illuminating signs and for awning signs. If you look at the plans we submitted, I will go through what he is, um, asking for and what he's proposing. If you look at, um, page one, that is the side of the building on the VFW Highway. We are requesting three wall signs on that building, two of them being internally illuminated signs. There is a Domino's sign, there is a Domino's logo as well as a dine-in and delivery sign. If you go to page two, that is the Lakeview Ave side of the premises. On that side, we are requesting two wall signs, one of them being internally illuminated. There's a Domino's sign as well as a hundred percent rail dough sign. If you go to page three of the plan, that is facing the parking lot. We are requesting three wall signs on the front of the building, one of them being internally illuminated. On that sign, we are requesting a variance for all the signs over three feet, which they are all over three feet. We are also requesting a freestanding internally illuminated sign on the corner of the VFW Highway in Lakeview Ave. That is section six point one. The original application we submitted, we were requesting for a twenty-five foot sign, we reduced that to a twenty-two foot sign. Based on the signs within the neighborhood, it appears that they range anywhere from sixteen feet to twenty-two feet. I have photographs of some of the signs, if you'd like to look at those in the neighborhood to submit to the board. We're also asking for enter and exit signs to direct traffic off of Lakeview Ave into the parking lot. That's on sheet seven and eight of the application. The signs are very similar to the signs that were approved back in twenty sixteen for the Domino's Pizza on Chumsford Street. This building is going to be very similar in the way it appears. The applicant's application promotes the goal of the City of Lowell by allowing construction of a vacant existing building into a Domino's Pizza. It'll create an attractive and safe environment for which people can walk to, they can work there, um, and obtain food. The proposed construction will keep with the character of the businesses on the street and will contribute to the master plan by increasing the neighborhood walkability, which was noted on the planning board decision, which is recorded at the Registry of Deeds. The rehabilitation of the building will improve the look on Lakeview Avenue as well as the VFW Highway. The construction will add to the tax base as well as employment opportunities. The access to the premises will be off of Lakeview Ave and that's why we are requesting the enter and exit signs to control the traffic to and from the premises. Ninety, um, Lakeview Ave, which is the parking lot, parking lot will be redeveloped for the business. The applicant owns several, um, Domino's pizzas within the City of Lowell, they are all maintained, they are all clean and he runs a good business. So we would be asking for these signs to be approved so he can open a new business on Lakeview Avenue.
Uh, great, that, thank you, Ms. Flood, for your presentation. Um, any, anything else you want to share with the board?
Um, would you like copies of the signs?
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
And I'll also give you a copy of the, um, the building on Chumsford Street so you can see the way it will be, the appearance of it.
Perfect, yeah, that sounds good, thank you. Um, now we're going to open up the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to speak, uh, in favor of this petition, in favor, in favor, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, just please state your name and address for the record, just please come up to the podium.
My name is Michael Laflambeault. I own and occupy the property at seventy-nine Lake, Lakeview Avenue, directly across the street. My front door to the Domino's front door is about a hundred feet. I'm handicapped, I'm retired, and I spend a great deal of time on the property and I'm not necessarily opposed to the signs on Lakeview Avenue, I just want them done in good taste where they don't overwhelm my property, okay? So I have no knowledge of what they intend for Lakeview Avenue, that's the only side I'm concerned with, is parallel to my house on Lakeview Avenue, right? And if those signs can be done in good taste, like nothing, um, strobing or flashing, um, and how long are they going to be illuminated, like, complete darkness, do they go off at midnight, are they on twenty-four seven? Those type of issues I'm ignorant of, I have no idea. So I just, like I said, I'm looking for that compromise where these are done in good taste, where they don't- So I just, like I said, I'm looking for that compromise where these are done in good taste, where they don't overwhelm my property. We had a similar issue about five years ago with the food goodie restaurant on Lakeview Avenue.
Yeah.
And the compromise there was, they had originally planned lights that illuminated out. They turned them on themselves to illuminate their own building. And that was a great compromise. So I don't really know the intentions of Domino's, but I'm looking for a compromise like that. So I hope tonight I can get some idea of what they're looking to do on Lakeview Avenue side. And other than that, I have no problems. I just don't want the overwhelming flashing neon sign on my house. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaFlem, for your comments.
Yep. Is there something I can look at, please?
This is the Lakeview Ave sign. This is the only internally illuminated sign. That's just a wall sign.
Is that illuminated?
It'll just have a light right there.
Oh.
This is the only internally illuminated on this side. That has a light on the top.
Yeah.
Not internally.
And these are just like little awning lights? Okay, and that's just illuminated consistently?
During the business hours, I'm sure. It'll be on.
And that is another question. What are the business hours?
I believe they're.
Mr. LaFlem, Ms. Flood, they're in the public process. We're gonna have to address the board. And then, you know, I'll give some time, and my colleagues will give some time, to answer some of your questions and concerns as well.
Well, I guess the question would be, how many hours a day is that light gonna be illuminated? And, you know, how powerful of a light? That's generally a concern. As long as it's done modestly, nothing overwhelming, I have no issues. But, you know, stop and think of that. I'm handicapped and I'm home 24/7, and you got this light in your face. It looks like it's in good taste. And if it's done in good taste, I really don't have a problem. I just didn't know what to expect. That's why I wanted to dress you to make sure it's done in good taste. That's it.
Yeah, I totally understand, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. LaFlem.
Thank you.
Attorney Flood, do you have any comments that you wanna mention right now before we open it up back to the public?
Pretending to the light on Lakeview Avenue?
Anything, yeah, you wanna comment on questions, Mr. LaFlem, or?
So basically, on the Lakeview Avenue sign, there's only one internally illuminated sign, which is the Domino's sign, which is on the top of the building. The other sign has a light that shines on it, but that's the only internally illuminated sign. The restaurant is usually open from 10:00 to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday through Thursday, and it's open to 10:00 to 3:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna open this back up to the public. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, hearing none? We're open up to comments, questions of the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Jamina.
Yeah, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir?
No, sorry.
Yes.
Can you please tell me the hours of operation?
Yeah, hours of operation are 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. That's Sunday to Thursday. And then Friday and Saturday, it's 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m.
Okay, all right. All right, then I see this wall disturbed here. I hope it's not gonna stay like that, right?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I see that the wall is disturbed over here. I mean, I know you're gonna fix it. I mean, when it's done. Actually, my question is, my other concern is, you know, the entry, the enter and exit, and also the pickup signs, are they gonna stay lit throughout?
I believe that picture that you're looking at is the Chumsford Street Domino's, not the one that we're proposing. The entrance and exit signs will be coming in off of Lakeview Ave, and they're on section sheet 6.1, I believe, on the plans we submitted. I was just showing that to show the size of the sign, the freestanding sign, and what the restaurant ultimately will look like.
Okay, well, it threw me off.
I'm sorry.
All right, okay. All right, well, my concern is, those are gonna, you're gonna have those type, right? They're gonna stay lit throughout the day or throughout the night?
The freestanding signs?
Yeah.
Entrance and exit?
Yeah.
Yes, those I believe are internally illuminated.
Yeah, so at least someone will not run into it if it is shut off.
I believe when we came in for the approval on Chumsford Street, the agreement was that the lights would automatically shut off one hour after the business closes. That was the condition that the board set last time we appeared for Chumsford Street.
Okay.
That was the condition of the approval.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamina. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier.
Just a couple of comments before I ask my one question. What's your relationship to the legendary Michigan coach? That was your dad? No kidding? Big Michigan fan, but I'm a fan of Domino's, too, so you're all right with me. The plans you submitted were outstanding.
Thank you.
I've never seen plans as colorful. It may help the butter. I think you'll be more confident after looking at these color, these color plans.
Well, I'll tell you, I've seen the Domino's on Chumsford Street, and I've seen the abandoned building across the street. And I appreciate, I appreciate what they've done. It looks good. It's gonna look good.
Yeah, if you saw the other, his other locations, I think you'd be confident that they are done, as you said, tastefully and well-maintained. I must agree. The improvements you've already made to the building are dramatic. They've already enhanced the look of the building and the character of that lower sample neighborhood there. The only question I have, the freestanding pylon sign?
Yes.
The 25-foot sign?
Yes.
Is that sign on Chumsford Street?
No.
No, no, I know where you proposed it for the new one, but do you have a similar sign at the Chumsford Street location?
Yes.
What's the height of that one?
22. That's why we reduced this one. We originally applied for 25 feet, and then we reduced it to 22 because we looked at the, they gave pictures. We looked at the signs within the neighborhood as well as Jeff's Domino's on Chumsford Street, and it was 22. So we're requesting a freestanding sign of 22 feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan.
All right. Three, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Flood. I'm sorry, I was looking at your original plans that had the 25, and that was my only concern of like, why do you, why do you guys have to be larger than everybody else? So, you're big time anyway, so. Just kidding. Yeah, great, no, this is fine. It's a great, great presentation. As long as, it seems like everything else is similar to the Chumsford Street one that we approved back in 2017. Like, keep that conformity with those Domino's that are in the area. I guess the only condition we would ask, which is normal, which we're usually asked, is the eternally illuminated lights be turned on one hour, one hour before dusk. On one hour before dusk and off one hour after closing. So that would be the condition that we, same thing that we did with Chumsford Street, pretty much. Or I can, I guess I can condition it or whatever.
No, that sounds good, Mr. Callahan.
But other than that, disappointed you didn't bring any pizza for us since it's been a long night. But that's okay.
Next time.
Next time, so. But I appreciate, thank you. I wish you the best of luck, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. You know, I'm in agreeance with my colleagues. It's a very detailed, thought-out plan. You know, it's probably gonna mirror the Chumsford location, as you said. I think my only concerns, but I think Mr. LaFlem, you know, I think once you see the renders, the drawings, it's gonna be done tastefully, sir. It's not gonna be, you know, strobing, flashing, like, anything too intrusive to your home. Hopefully, that helps make this a little more palatable since you are a director butter. And I'm sure, Ms. Flood, through you, would the manager or someone mind giving contact information to Mr. LaFlem in case he has any concerns or problems, you know, throughout the project or after the open, since he's a director butter? So in the spirit of, you know, kind of being neighborly and working together.
Sure, absolutely. I can give him my contact information, and then I can in turn contact my client. That's fine.
Hopefully, that helps alleviate some concerns you have, Mr. LaFlem.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You know, like Mr. Brier said, and Attorney Flood said, I think this is a good project for that neighborhood, for that building. It's a great repurpose of that kind of existing building that's nothing in there right now. I think, so I have no other concerns particularly. And there was a condition, I believe, Mr. Callahan?
Uh, yeah.
With the hours of illumination, if you're okay with that?
Yes.
Ms. Flood? Any other comments from the board before we vote? And just a point of clarification, since it's only four members, you would need all four, four members to vote in favor for this to pass or approve. So I just wanted to give you that option as well. Did you wanna add anything, Mr. Callahan, about the voting process?
No, I mean, that's, I mean, it is, it's 4-0. The only one, the one thing we do have to add is that we are accepting the plans that were, just the revised plans that were, showed the 22, 22 feet as opposed to the 25-feet height. But, yeah, the vote has to be 4-0, so.
And if you amend votes to all those conditions and those, you know, all the voting process, we'll go through with the vote. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. No further comments from the board? I don't see. With that being said, can we have a motion, please?
Jared, we're doing two because it's a variance and a special permit, or we can do, it's the same thing, we can do just one on all, 'cause it's kind of the same.
Your discretion, whichever you prefer.
All right, with that, Mr. Chairman, I can probably just do, they're all, they're all the same, we can just do one vote for all.
Yeah, I'm fine with one vote.
All right, so three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2019-10, 78 and 90 Lakeview Avenue. Property, sorry, Lakeview Avenue LLC, property located at 64, 78-90 and 98.1 Lakeview Avenue, for special permit for signs under section 6.3.4. And variance for signs under sections 6.3.2.8 and 6.3.2.18, with the condition that the eternally illuminated signs to be turned on one hour before dusk and then turned off one hour after closing. And also, while I don't think we condition, we just accept the plan, the revised plans as they were presented. Thank you.
Can we have a second to the motion, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brier. Roll call, please.
Member Peck.
Approve the condition.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Approve the conditions.
Member Jamina.
Approve the conditions.
Congratulations, Ms. Flood. You've been approved of conditions. Best of luck to you and your client. Going forward on tonight's agenda, under other business minutes for approval for our February 25th meeting, any comments, concerns from the board for the minutes from February 25th? Can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes from February 25th.
Second to the motion, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brier. Roll call, please.
Member Peck.
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve the minutes.
Member McCarthy.
Abstain.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Jamina.
Approve.
All right, the minutes have been approved for February 25th. Any other comments or questions from the board before we adjourn?
Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody.
Thank you. Happy St. Patrick's Day to.
Hope everyone has a good crack on St. Patrick's Day, which is Irish for fun time, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I'm also in agreeance, happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. Seeing, seeing all the comments by the board, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you, and have a good evening, folks.